As we be seated, we'll call to the order of the meeting of the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday, December 14, 2021. At this time, I'd ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Ever-present God, as we come together in the midst of a busy day, let us be still for a moment and know that you are here. Quiet our racing thoughts so that energies may be focused on the matters at hand. Be present in the conversation to be shared, the decisions to be pondered, the plans to be made. Keep us honest in our deliberations and open to the power and gentleness of your spirit working in and through us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Okay, now I'm gonna entertain any public comment excluding public hearing items. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak this morning? And if so, please come up and identify yourself. Seeing none?
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry ma'am, I didn't see you get up.
Couldn't decide if it was the right time. Where do you want me?
Over at the speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Carolyn Nimsick, 9620 Crooked Stick Lane, Port St. Lucie. Many of you know me, I've been a longtime commercial realtor, more than 40 years, and I've been working in St. Lucie County for more than 20. Our business is cyclical. Either everybody wants to be somewhere or nobody wants to be somewhere. I was here at the last time of bustling activity, and at that time, the county was taking years to approve site plans, and the cycle busted, and many of the people that I worked with gave up $2 million back to the bank, quit the county. Now, we're bustling again, and you have the TESERTA revised site plan for approval today, and it's a wonderful time to sell. You'll create jobs and revenue for the county. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Board of County Commissioners' Joint City of Fort Pierce Meeting on November 8, 2021.
No approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zanowski, a second by Commissioner Bartz. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we go any further, I'd just like the other commissioners to know that one of the ambulatory services that we'll be presenting this morning is stuck in traffic, so it's the will of the board if we'd like to move this towards the latter part of the meeting, or should we move forward?
They're both here.
Howard, is there someone stuck in traffic?
That's what I understand, sir. That was a telephone call that we received, and they were asking to be zoomed in if that was possible, but obviously, we can't just do that, we're not set up for that, so there was no way for them to be heard.
And then I'd ask from the public, are there representatives from the company that is under agenda item to be hired for the county?
Mr. Chair, if that's 20 minutes, then that should not be a problem, because the other business of the board will probably take that long.
We'll see how it goes when we address it at the time. Thank you. Okay, that out of the way. This morning, we have a presentation from the St. Lucie County Cultural Alliance, and that's Alanya Ush from the Arts Alliance. Good morning.
Good morning. We have a little treat for you first.
Alrighty.
Just one second, please.
And just make sure when you speak, you're into the microphone.
Absolutely.
For the recording. Thank you.
Oh crap. Very careful. Apologize, technical difficulties.
Oops. Thank you.
Is this my entry, please?
Apparently, yeah.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Wow, this is different from my typical hearing. Thanks very much, Oliana, can you tell us who that was, who performed?
That was the Preston Contemporary Dance Theatre Company, and they are a member of ours, and we wanted to give you a little glimpse of the cultural activities that are happening in the county, and how we're growing creativity and unusual presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's such a pleasure for me to be here. I come to you this morning, my name is Rebecca Miller, I'm the Chair of the Cultural Alliance, and I've been so for the last two years, and I brought a burgeoning and tiny little want-to-be institution to everybody years ago, and I'm here not to brag about everything we've done, because I'm gonna let Oliana take care of that in her presentation, I'm here to say thanks, because honestly, I don't often get up in front of a hearing, and I'm able to address you all as friends. I've known every single one of you for quite some time now, and I'm speaking to you, Chair and Commissioners, as a friend and a fellow member of the arts and the community of St. Lucie County. The decisions that you made and you put into motion a couple of years ago have had sustaining and deep, absolute interactions in our community, and the economic and the cultural activity and response to everything that is happening has been tremendous. And so, I get a little teary, because I've been thinking about this for so long in this county, and thinking how we could really make something really palpable and really lasting, and you've done that. So I'm here just to say thank you. You all, each one of you, in multiple meetings, recognized the importance of this, honored it, respected what we were saying, and understood the economic angles of the entire endeavor. And our artistic community, our cultural community, is huge, it's strong here, and they needed to be honored in this way, and we needed to be able to bring the attention that was so deserving to them, and the opportunity that they so desperately needed. And I know that we couldn't have done this without Mark and Howard, and Mark's and Howard's continued focus and presence in this endeavor. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Where's Mark? Thank you. So, that's it. I'm gonna let Oliana kind of talk today about what's going on, and I just wanted to personally make this trip here and just say thanks, in spite of a swelled eye and a bad drive. I made it, I'm just saying. So anyway, thanks very much, have a wonderful day, and keep supporting the arts.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Tipton, thank you so much for having us here. My name is Oliana Ash, I'm the Executive Director of St. Lucie Cultural Alliance, and I'm here with Jake Sanders, who is our recent addition to our team, so we're thrilled to be here to tell you a little bit about what we have done and where we're going. So we are St. Lucie Cultural Alliance, and we are made possible by St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners. So once again, thank you so much for everything you've done for this county. So, St. Lucie County, who are we? We see the St. Lucie County as being the cultural gem of the Treasure Coast, where clusters of galleries thrive around the county, creating walkable shopping in our getting arts districts, intimate theaters and music venues attract local and national talent, where artists of all cultural disciplines, visual performing, culinary, fashion, film, multidisciplinary, and others, produce festivals and events unique to our county's character and pulse. Street performers, life painters, dancers, musicians breathe life into our streets and draw international tourism and inspire staycations. Sculpture gardens from upcycled and recycled materials receive national acclaim, and St. Lucie County launches ecocultural tourism initiative. Our students' imaginations explore with creativity, academic performance improves, and our youth are the driving force for conservation. Every initiative we put in place now is strategically designed to realize our ultimate vision, and that is that St. Lucie County is the cultural gem of the Treasure Coast. So how do we do that, and how do we get here? When we first started, I was doing the pandemic, so we wanted to find out mostly what our community needs, and we got on calls, we got on Zoom calls, and we started finding out from our artists what the needs are. And four very clear and distinct points came to mind, and that was lack of our venues, marketing, or need for marketing, need for professional development, and need for earned and revenue funding. So how do we go about addressing those issues? When it comes to venues, we couldn't exactly build them overnight, so we ended up developing multiple partnerships with our current businesses. The first thing we did was we opened our own Cultural Alliance galleries, and that was done through a public-private partnership. We're getting a substantially subsidized rent, and as a result of that partnership, we're able to exhibit and display majority of artists. At one point, we were able to exhibit all of them, fortunately and unfortunately, we're not able to do so anymore because our membership has exploded, but we can assure every single artist that if he or she wants to be seen, we will provide a venue for them. MidFlorida Events Center has been an enormous partner of ours, where we do both exhibitions, concerts, festivals, and they continue to build our relationship and help our cultural landscape here in the county. The other ones are basically pilot projects for us. So 500 Orange Event Center is an event center that recently opened in April. We are presenting our artists there in various galleries, but additionally, we're also launching a musical series that we're thrilled about, and Jake is actually in charge of that. But we want to actually replicate that concept in other event centers. So same thing with the Honda Luxury Real Estate Company, it's a real estate company where we exhibit artists, but we're gonna be approaching other real estate companies that are the realtors to make sure that when people buy homes here in the county, the first thing they think about is they need to be decorating their homes with our artists' work. The House of Seven Gables will sell smaller pieces, luxury and smaller pieces of art, same thing that could be done in various hotels and other retail stores. And of course, our public buildings is our pride and joy, where people come into public buildings and see our beautiful artwork. So this was our first building, we had an exhibit right here in the corner on the third floor. We're getting ready to open our next one at the Planning and Development Service Department, where developers get to walk through beautiful hallways, see gorgeous art, and hopefully put that art in their upcoming development projects. St. Lucie County Courthouse, Commissioner Bartz, thank you so much for working with us on that one, it's gonna be fantastic, it's gonna be an annual celebration with foot trucks and musicians outside and what have you, but it's another beautiful place for us to exhibit phenomenal artwork. And we've done great things at Treasure Coast International Airport that we're looking to build on as well. Marketing. Not all of our artists, not just here but everywhere, know exactly how to promote themselves, so we are here to help. First thing we do is we put all of our members on our online membership directory. When you click on each member, you'll be able to go to the individual website. So those artists that don't have their own website can utilize ours to really promote themselves. We have a calendar of listings of upcoming events, which again, link to the individual pages of our artists. Spotlight features human stories that we do in weekly newsletters, and once the newsletter is published, we then text it to our audiences as well. Social media platforms are utilized for all of our events, and we make sure that it's a paid social media, that we boost all the ads that we put on our social media for our members, as well as utilizing our $10,000 a month Google grand ad that we got. We have our listing of our artists in our magazine, I hope you guys have seen those, we have a second issue right now. The beauty of that magazine is, of course, we have St. Lucie County on one side, you flip the magazine over, and we have Martin County, and this magazine goes throughout the Treasure Coast. So it's a great way for both of the counties to work together to promote the cultural landscape on the Treasure Coast. And we have offered our artists free tent space at various festivals and pop-ups. So we started that ritual last year at the International Treasure Coast Arts and Mindfulness Festival, and we're gonna continue doing that at various activities throughout it as we grow bigger and stronger. Professional development. Before I came here, I did a little research to find out how many of our arts organizations actually receive funding from the state. And it's not lack of our talent, but lack of our arts organizations and artists to actually submit, or ability to submit those grants. So we had four organizations from the entire county that received funding for the last two years. We need to change that. We did that last year in April by having a workshop specifically on that, and we invited the representatives from the state to answer questions for our members. We're still working on that, but that's gonna be an annual initiative on our end, and we will make sure that our artists go out there and get not just state grants, but other funding available to them as well. We featured a workshop on introduction to public art, since that is a big initiative in both cities and the county as well, and our upcoming events are gonna include social media tools as well as peer-to-peer giving. We provide assistance with grants, so if arts organization or individual artist actually does a grant, we will review it and we'll give them specific instructions on how to improve it. Same thing with press releases, not only do we provide guidance, but we also distribute these releases on behalf of our artists. We have an online store where artists can sell, and we have open hours to answer any questions for our cultural community. Professional opportunities for artists. We strongly believe that artists need to make a living, and that's where we come in to help them with that as well. So our artists sold their arts at over 30 exhibitions that we featured this past year. Vendor sales at fests and pop-ups also provide an opportunity for artists to earn a living. We have successfully had work commissioned, and we're extremely excited, of course, about area regional transit and the fact that we have our artists' work traveling museum throughout the county, and that our artists also receive compensation for that. We think it's extremely important. Performances. Whenever we have an opportunity to engage our artists, we always make sure they're compensated for that as well. So whether it's at art walks, PS in lights, sip and shops, festivals, and opening night receptions, we always look at our own backyard to hire our artists. In magazines, we have, it was designed, editor, contributor writing, everybody who worked on this magazine were our members, and all got compensated for that. So need to earn a living, we just spoke about. What about funding? We are getting ready to launch our first innovation and mini-grant initiative. Mini-grants are pretty self-explanatory, it's gonna be small funds given to on smaller projects, but we're extremely excited about the innovation grant. And the idea behind that is we want our artists to come up with cool ideas, because they're the ones who are the creative force behind this. Not only are we gonna provide funding for that project, but we will also make sure that they have administrative assistance, marketing help, additional fundraising, whatever that project needs to succeed, we wanna be there hand in hand, making sure that it comes to life. We offer, we take 10%, the way we're gonna be funding this initiative and make sure that it's sustainable is every piece of work that we sell, we receive 10% commission, that money goes strictly back into the funding mechanism, same thing for ticket sales. We have received $10,000 from the city of Port St. Lucie for that purpose, and we're certainly hoping that the city of Fort Pierce will join that initiative, hint, hint. Proceeds from specific Cultural Alliance events, such as our ZEM festival, which was formerly known as Treasure Coast Arts and Mindfulness Fest, and other fundraising events. And the reason why we're doing all of this is because arts and culture sector is an economic engine. In the state of Florida, the industry of arts and culture generates over $4.5 billion of economic activities annually. $2.29 billion by nonprofits, arts and culture organizations. The economic activity supports 132,000 full-time jobs and generates over $3.35 billion in resident household income. And here in our county, a quarter of a million people attended cultural events that generated revenue of $2.24.7 million and contributed $10.6 million to our local GDP. And St. Lucie County arts and cultural sector and tourism. 17% of all tourists visited cultural events when they came to this county. 14% said that the culture was the primary reason for visiting St. Lucie County. Entertainment brought in over $110 million in direct spending, and cultural tourists spent 60% more than those who did not partake in cultural activities. That is an enormous area for growth and improvement. And our quick snapshot, this is where, that's your return on our investment. In the past year, our membership increased by 641%. Our in-kind donations increased by 2,797%, and our total revenue increased by 57%. That means that the investment that you made in this organization doubled in just a year. So again, enormous thank you for your support. We could not do this without you. You're definitely a major supporter of ours, and you've given us the opportunity to go and raise additional funds to support this cause. The city of Port St. Lucie, as I mentioned, have joined us as well. Florida Builds Culture is our supporter, and we're thrilled to announce that this year, we're gonna be receiving funds from National Endowment for the Arts. Our business membership has grown immensely, and that's a major initiative of ours and focus of ours to make sure that the businesses continue to support arts and culture. Individual artists, as I mentioned, have exploded, and we have every imaginable discipline under painters, photographers, filmmakers, graphic designers, book buildings, singers, choreographers, you name it, we have them as part of our cultural family. And arts organizations. I had no idea that we had so many arts organizations in this county, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. New initiatives. ACE stands for Arts Conservation and Environment, and the idea behind this initiative is that we want to make sure that our environment continues to be protected and conserved and continues to grow, and the best way we see that happening is through recycling. So we wanna start with our children. We're gonna go into schools this year with Cast and Westwood High School, and bring our experts from Oxbow Eco Center and MRT Educational Center to teach kids the importance of recycling. The kids will then make recyclable bins, those recyclable bins will be collecting recyclable materials, from that they will make their arts projects, and then we'll go ahead and exhibit those projects at our ZEM festival this spring. This is just a pilot, and we're looking to make this a county-wide initiative. With the Inner Truth Project, we're doing something similar, and through upcycling, we're reminding the survivors that they are constantly morphing into a new version of themselves. This is the project that was funded by National Endowment for the Arts, and I can't stress enough how rare it is for NAA to grant a pilot project, to provide seed money for a project, and to also fund an organization that is as growing or is beginning to grow as ours. So this is a huge accomplishment, and we're extremely, extremely proud of that. The other new initiative is our ZEM Fest, which is billed on our International Treasure Coast Arts and Mindfulness Festival that we did last spring. The city of Port St. Lucie is gonna be joining us, but providing the musical concept to that, so we're seeing it as being much bigger, and having this our signature event that will draw international crowds down the road. And of course, art, the area regional transit. We are again so thrilled that our artists' work is gonna be seen on the buses as our movie museum, as Mr. Sean Mitchell said, we just love the quote, so I apologize for keep on stealing it from you. Enormous thank to our Board of Directors, we're especially grateful to Mr. Rebecca Miller for leading this, the vision for this organization, and the rest of the board have been working nonstop to make sure that we continue to grow and that the word does get out to our staff. Again, I mentioned Jake is our newest addition, we're thrilled to have them. Delaney Claude is our longest employee, but right now, she's busy giving birth to our first St. Lucie Cultural Alliance baby, so we're hoping to see her back in March, and to all these A liaison, Charlotte, Mark, and Peter. So again, on behalf of Cultural Alliance Board of Directors, our creative community, our residents, our visitors, our staff, we thank you so much for your support.
I know I'm speaking on behalf of the entire board, but I just wanna thank you guys. You've stepped it up to a newer level. What's the old saying I like to use? Liars figure, figures don't lie. When you look what you've done in the short period of time on behalf of the cultural people in this county, it's amazing. I would have one question, though, on the Zen Festival, is there a website that maybe perhaps a company or an individual can contribute or purchase tickets, and if so, would you please let the audience know?
Yes, I believe it's zemfest.com. I'm almost positive of that, if not, we'll have that information both on our website and the city's Port St. Lucie.
So our website is artsstlucie.org, and you can see about the ZEM Fest, about our upcoming musical series. So we've got people in our musical series that have played with Celine Dion, NSYNC, and Shaka Khan, national acts, it's gonna be really exciting. Marvelous, the music of Marvin Gaye opens January 13th, and we cannot thank you enough for everything you've done to support us and to help us be the hub for arts here in St. Lucie County.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. Would anyone else from the DIA's like to speak?
Just real quick. Ariana, you did not, unless I missed it, mention the fact that we had a renowned artist photographer here in our community, and that was Clyde Butcher, and brought his photographs and did a beautiful display at the MidFlorida Center. Great presentation, and from everything that I can tell, it was a great coup on your part with the organization, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, you're absolutely right, I did not mention that. It was a collaboration with MidFlorida Events Center, the city of Port St. Lucie and us. MidFlorida Events Center and the city did a phenomenal job of bringing the Florida Humanities Waterways Exhibition to the city and to the county, and we collaborated with them to bring Mr. Butcher here. He was here in person, he signed posters, it was fantastic having him here, and I think a lot of the audiences and members who did come really enjoyed having him in our county.
Thank you again for that.
Thank you all.
And this is a good time, one of the longstanding cultural groups, the Fort Pierce Jazz and Blues Society, is having Waterside Blues this week, so check it out, and we talked about the concerts, and they have been in place for probably 25 years, so I just wanted to give them a heads up, too.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda, I'd just like the public to know that there was an add-on, and that is 8B6. And with that, would any commissioner like to pull for discussion anything on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I don't wanna pull anything, I just wanna, you may be doing this already, but in the event you're not, I always like to point out the sales tax and where our money goes, and I've had a lot of calls on the Glades Cut Off projects, and 8J4 is the Glades Cut Off resurfacing project, and it's gonna be underway, and that's paid with the HEBS and sales tax that they passed.
Thank you. You also have a few that are related to the American Rescue Plan, and that is the laptops at the Port St. Lucie Branch Library, tablets for the AWE, Library AWE, and monies to Fort Pierce for their general fund for $800,000. Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz, and a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to public hearings. Now, we will give the opportunity for the public to speak. If there's anyone after the presentation, we'll let the staff present, and if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak, that would be your opportunity. So who's gonna lead us on this, Mr. Tipton?
It'll be Mr. Satterley, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Lori, if you wanna, I think the presentation, the district, it is up there somewhere. While she's getting that teed up, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you know, we started to, got the St. Lucie Cultural Alliance going, you know, five years ago, and got off to kind of a bumpy start, and there were some headwinds in the community, but this board has continued to make the annual investment in the cultural alliance, and I think it's been, you know, really, really key.
Excuse me for a second, I'm just gonna remind everybody out in the audience, if you have a cell phone and it's on, put it in the silent mode.
And I've had a lot of calls on the Glades Cut Off projects, and eight J fours, the Glades Cut Off Resurfacing Project, and it's going to be underway, and that's paid with the habeas and sales tax that they passed.
Thank you. You also have a few that are related to the American Rescue Plan, and that is the laptops at the Port St. Lucie Branch Library, tablets for the A W, Library A W E, and monies to Fort Pierce for their general fund for eight hundred thousand. Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second motion by Commissioner Bartz, and the second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to public hearings. Now, we will give the opportunity for the public to speak. If there's anyone after the presentation, we'll let the staff present, and then if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak, that will be your opportunity. So who's going to lead us on this? Mr. Tipton?
It'll be Mr. Satterley, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Lori, if you want to, I think the presentation, redistricting is up there somewhere. While she's getting that teed up, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you know, we started to, got the St. Lucie Cultural Alliance going, you know, five years ago, and got off to kind of a bumpy start, and there were some headwinds in the community, and, but this board has continued to make the annual investment in, in the, in the cultural alliance. And I think it's been, you know, really, really key.
Excuse me for a second. I'm just going to remind everybody out in the audience, if you have a cell phone and it's on, put it in the silent mode, please. Thank you.
You know, the board's continued investment in the cultural alliance, I think we're finally seeing with, you know, Aleona's, you know, bringing Aleona on, and Rebecca is the chair of that, of that board, that really starting to see the success. And one of the things that, you know, Neil Levine talked about when, when we first started working with the Brevard Cultural Alliance was, you know, the arts and culture in the county have a real economic impact, and that economic impact, you know, is, is kind of what he wanted us to focus on, is just how important it is that we support that. And I think that the, you know, the similar is the support that the county gives to the E D C. I, I think, you know, Pete Tesh was here, you know, what, a month ago, and talking about, you know, the return on investment that we've gotten, that this, this board again has invested in the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County, and just how, you know, how spectacular that's turned out. And I think that we're really beginning to see that, you know, similarly to the, to the, you know, to the cultural sector in the county. So, you know, really appreciate the board's support, and I know the artists in the communities appreciate the board's support. And now, as Monty Python used to say, and now for something completely different, let's talk, let's talk about redistricting. Last week, you know, we, we brought to you the scenarios for redistricting the board based upon the change in population. And so I'm just going to briefly, you know, go through that presentation again. You know, it has to be done about every ten years. We can do it more than that, but, you know, by statute and in the Constitution, every ten years, you know, we're required to look at our population and see, you know, if we need to do redistricting. And there are some general guidelines that are set up, you know, we should follow census blocks, and significant boundaries should be contiguous and compact, and the population differential shouldn't be more than about three percent per district. Normally, we probably would have had this done a while ago, but the census data didn't come out until much later than it normally would. We've been on a bit of an accelerated schedule. But, you know, we've grown by, you know, over fifty thousand people in the last ten years. And Howard and I were discussing this morning, that growth has probably really been, you know, since about two thousand fifteen or sixteen, you know, we come out of the Great Recession, and, you know, we've just, you know, the foot has been on the gas, the growth pedal, you know, since then. So we've really seen some growth. Here's the current commissioned district boundaries, the population in two thousand ten per district, and now you can see in two thousand twenty with the three hundred and thirty thousand people, you know, how the districts have grown. And obviously District Five with, including, you know, Tradition and the Southern Grove area in Port St. Lucie has, has really grown, you know, a tremendous amount. So with that, you can see the individual jurisdictions averaging about eighteen and a half percent. The City of Port St. Lucie grew about twenty-three percent. This unincorporated county grew almost twelve percent. And that's, you know, when you consider, that's still pretty impressive when you consider that the City of Fort Pierce and their annexation, you know, they've kind of, they kind of grow by annexation in addition to just the sort of the natural growth. In our informal meeting, in our open, open house that we had here at the last meeting, you know, G I S did a great job with the Esri software that they brought, really helped us look at how to, you know, create districts, you know, equalize the population, but do that in real time rather than having to draw it by hand or, you know, like we used to do it. It's really been a great tool for us. So it's been interactive, and with that, we came up with five scenarios. We brought those five to you at the informal meeting. You narrowed it down to three. And at the last meeting, we kind of got down to about two scenarios. Scenario one and scenario two, the board was a little bit split, decided to wait until we had a full board, came back today. And so here we are to see if, you know, can't come to a resolution. One thing we did, and Lori is rolling through the scenarios right now, but one of the things that you asked us to do, and if you would go to that last, kind of the last map, Lori, there's scenario three, and then, yeah, they kind of decided that it was kind of split between scenario one and scenario two, wanted to have an idea about the different populations in each, in each, in each one. And so Lori has put together this map that shows the scenarios and the, you know, the population differentials. They're both, you know, they're, they're close, they're within the, within the parameters that we've established, and so it's really kind of now up to you all to decide, you know, which is your preference. You know, the, the fact is that Districts two and three, Port St. Lucie, Southern Port St. Lucie, you know, they're kind of about the same. So the just, you know, the adjustments are to one, four, and five, and, you know, the barrier island, and, you know, just trying to balance it out. It's, so it's, it's, it's really kind of up to y'all now whether, you know, which ones, you know, the board can sort of reach consensus on. And if you have any questions for me or the staff, we're here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to now open it to a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak on the subject matter, please stand and identify yourself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dear Chairman Sean Mitchell, Commissioners Kathy Townsend, Chris Zadovsky, I practiced that.
Thank you, thank you. That was great. Give me a brother.
Linda Bartz, and Franny Hutchinson. My name is Michael Reardon. I have been practicing as a doctor in St. Lucie County for the last thirty years, and I've been living on Marina Drive on North Hutchinson Island for the last thirty years. My address is two thirteen Marina Drive. I am the president of the North Beach Association, or N B A, representing more than twelve hundred households. The median composition of the households is two, and I estimate that I am representing about two thousand four hundred residents, most of whom are your constituents. N B A's purpose is to preserve and promote North Hutchinson Island. We undertake activities and support government, governmental actions which will make the North Beach area a better, a better place to live. We strive to maintain and improve the value of our property, preserve the natural beauty of North Beach, and protect its ecological aspects, including the protection of our beaches and our waterways. St. Lucie County residents were recently notified that due to a new census report, it is necessary to update the district boundaries for locally elected officials. As you know, the county G I S division has created three new and different district maps, actually down to two, I guess. So each commissioned district represents roughly the same number of residents. North Beach Association Executive Committee, Board of Directors, and General Membership evaluated the three proposals and has selected Scenario Two as the best for representing the interests of St. Lucie County overall, the barrier islands, and North Hutchinson Island. The economic drivers for the county and its growth have revolved around a strategically supported business economy emphasizing agriculture and tourism, much of which is focused on our Indian River Lagoon, our inland waterways, intercoastal waterways, and oceanfront access. N B A believes that selecting the district as represented in Scenario Two will best analyze, guide, and strongly advocate on behalf of our critical waters elements. We appreciate your consideration of our position as you deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this subject? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, and we'll let the...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and as we discussed last, last meeting, you know, you are, there's no single member districts. You all represent, you represent everybody. I mean, it's, you know, no matter where people live, they can reach out to any one of you, and you all do a really good job of, of representing the whole county.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments from the dais?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, except scenario number two.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadovsky for selection of Scenario Two. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And so the proper thing to now would do is call the vote, and we'll see where we stand. Madam Secretary, would you please call the vote? We have a motion by Commissioner Zadovsky, a second by Commissioner Bartz.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Let the record reflect that it was a four to one vote in favor of Scenario Two.
And, and Mr. Chair, members of the board, we just want to make sure that we include that map and the legal description of the, of the Scenario Two in the, in the minutes of the meeting. And that has been prepared, the legal description has been prepared by the county surveyor, and so we will make sure that that is included as well.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your good work. Okay. Moving along, we'll go to item nine B. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jennifer Hill, Management and Budget Director. This item is a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. With the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one complete, staff has calculated the actual beginning balances of numerous funds. Therefore, we are recognizing additional balance forward that was not appropriated in the current adopted budget. We're adjusting the beginning balances and adjusting inter-fund transfers related to these balances. This resolution establishes the fiscal year twenty-two budget for unanticipated revenue totaling eighty-six million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and appropriates these balances for their applicable funds and budgets. The budget, the public hearing was advertised on Thursday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and with these changes, it would bring the total F Y twenty-two county budget to seven hundred and twelve million, eight hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss the subject matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadovsky, a second by Commissioner Bartz. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move along to nine C, and this is the St. Lucie County Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity Application from National Health Transport. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Karen Kozak, San Jose County Public Safety Emergency Management Safety Planner. Joining me is also Caroline Valentine as well. Going to be presenting item nine C one. San Jose County Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity Application for National Health Transport. National Health Transport has submitted an application for a Class B Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, C O P C N. At its meeting on November ninth, two thousand twenty-one, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, inclusive of the commission appointees, and a representative from Lawn Wood Regional Medical Center and St. Lucie Medical Center, reviewed the application and determined the application was in compliance with the standards of review set forth in section eighteen dash, eighteen dash five four of the St. Lucie Code of Ordinances. Accordingly, the council voted six to zero to approve the application. The Public Safety Director has notified the city managers of Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie of the pending application. To date, no response has been received from the cities. Copies of the application in sections eighteen dash five four and eighteen dash five six of the San Jose County Code of Ordinances are attached. Previous action, none. Financial impact, none. Recommendation, staff recommends the board determine the application of National Health Transport for a Class B Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity meets the standards of review set forth in section eighteen dash five six. Approve the application and authorize the chair to sign the Class B Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Does anyone would like to get up and speak on this subject matter? And when we do get to the microphone, please identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am Ellen Bogdanoff. I represent National Health Transport. I want to thank all of you for your time on, on our calls to educate you, and I'm glad to see, Mr. Chairman, that you're doing well. I know that you were in an accident, and I'm, I'm glad to see that you're here. I wanted to respectfully request that you approve the application. It was approved, obviously, by the E M S Council, and, but I'm actually wanted to also address the elephant in the room, and that is a video that you received from Broward County with testimony from one of my colleagues on the situation in Broward County. And I just want to, you know, state on the record, it's very different circumstances in Broward County than it is here in St. Lucie County. The comments made about the overall shortage of employees throughout the country, I think, is, is well documented. I mean, service workers, I mean, you wait in restaurants a lot longer simply because there is a shortage of help. But we have kind of a unique situation here, which Walter will speak to, Walter Eisman, with National Health Transport, that the Treasure Coast actually has a significant number of E M Ts waiting for employment. And I can assure you that Mr. Rodriguez would not be making the financial investment, nor the, bringing his resources to this community if he didn't think that he could put paramedics on the ambulances to serve the community. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about why we believe it would be important for St. Lucie County to approve this. We have proven the need. We have secured contracts with Lawn Wood Medical, St. Lucie Medical Center, St. Lucie at Darwin Square, Treasure Coast Hospice, Cleveland Clinic, Motive Care, M T M, and VITIS. So we already have contracts. They have expressed a request for additional services. You have one provider here, essentially one provider here in St. Lucie County, and competition, what we've seen happen actually in Broward County when it was only one provider, the service went from, you know, not, not having a lot of people requesting it to eighty-five percent satisfaction rate. So it was a significant change. And the concern that the medical director had, as well as the commission with the, with the application that was pending in Broward County, is that it would disrupt what they finally feel was stable service in the community. So it was not recommended by the medical director, and the commission did not support because professional staff had determined otherwise. Your professional staff here has basically said that they believe that this would be a good thing for the community, and we're requesting that. I did want to let you know that National Health Transport is very active in the communities it serves. It's, it does a lot. It has, just to share back with you, it has an annual Disney on Wheels event. It's a three-day Disney World trip for sixteen medically fragile children. They're medically professional caregivers and a family member. They have an annual Thanksgiving bash in one of the communities that they serve, and they, it includes a health fair, and they have fed thirty thousand people and distributed five thousand toys since its inception. So they're, they're team players. They went into several communities that requested help during COVID, where they were not necessarily licensed when the governor had his executive order, because a lot of their existing contracts with some of their other providers in the communities they're in asked them to come and assist because they were all overwhelmed. And they did that at a cost to, to the company. So they do, they do participate. The other, they are operating in eight counties, including some of your surrounding counties, including Martin, Okeechobee, and Indian River. They're in Miami-Dade, they're in Broward. So we are here to answer any questions. I know that Walter is right behind me. We'll address the issue of what I believe is a perception that there's a shortage of E M Ts. And if you have any questions, Mr. And if you have any questions, Mr. Rodriguez is here to answer them. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I wanted to thank our wonderful employees for coming out and supporting us as well. I also want to introduce Raul Rodriguez is the owner of National Health Transport. Roger Forbes behind him is our Chief Operating Officer and Mike DeSouza is our local operations manager. Wanted to talk a little bit about the need for services in St. Lucy County. We decided this year, because of the request of our customers, to expand into the Treasure Coast. Health Corporation, Healthcare Corporation of America, HCA owns Lawnwood, St. Lucy, Darwin Square. They've requested us to come up here and operate an ambulance service. So we applied for COPCNs in Martin County, we applied for COPCNs in Okeechobee County, we applied for COPCN in Indian River County. And the one thing that we heard everywhere we went was that there was a shortage of employees and that we would never get employees to work for us. Well, I can tell you firsthand, we do have employees that work for us. And we also have an additional eighty-six applications on file right now. EMTs and paramedics, in the last couple of years, have taken off and gone into other businesses, gone into other industries. Traditionally, in the ambulance services, the rate, the wages were low. I'll be the first to admit it, they were low. Raul, during the pandemic, was crunched during the time. So what he did was he doubled down. He went to the EMTs and paramedics and said, guys, I know you're all struggling. Inflation's killing us, gas prices are killing us, but you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to give you all raises. All of his EMTs start at fifteen dollars an hour. If they have the ability to drive, they start at fifteen fifty. Guess what he's also said? If you've been an EMT for any amount of time other than brand new, we're going to acknowledge your experience based on how long you've had a license in the state of Florida and we're going to pay you more a percentage for every year you've been an EMT. He did the same thing for paramedics. He started them out at nineteen dollars an hour, at plus experience. So for every year that they have experience, we're throwing a percentage to them to acknowledge that experience. You're going to hear from the customers today. I know a lot of them couldn't come out. And I'll be honest with you, some of them were afraid because there is a monopoly and they were afraid of the damage it was going to do and they weren't going to receive the service that they needed. But you're also going to hear some comment cards from some of the customers that talk about the need, that talk about that there is nowhere to turn. The employees don't have a place to turn. If they don't like the employment there, they've got a monopoly. The customers don't have anywhere to turn. So if they call for an ambulance and they don't have availability, it then falls on your fire rescue department. Is that fair to your guys? I don't think so. You know, we can't come in and run point to point currently. We can take patients out of St. Lucy County, we can bring patients into St. Lucy County, but we can't do point to point. So if Lawnwood has a patient that needs to go to St. Lucy, guess what? They don't have the availability, they have to call somebody else. And that, currently, there is no option to call somebody else. So, we're asking you to acknowledge what your staff has worked so hard to go through the process, given us a unanimous recommendation for approval, for us to operate in St. Lucy County, and just make it competitive for us. That's all we're asking is for a chance. We want to be able to compete with a local provider. We want to give your customers, your patients, your facilities, the end users, the ability to call another service when they need it. You know, Ellen talked about a couple of people that have, we've contracted with. Vitas Hospice, the people at End of Life that need this service so desperately, sometimes have to wait three and four hours for ambulance services. It's not fair. You know, people want to take their patients home, their family members home. So if they are in an end of life scenario, that they can die with family members at home. And if they get stuck in a hospital for three or four or five hours, guess what? They end up dying in the hospital. And that's just not fair. We want the opportunity to come in and provide a good service with high paying, higher paying jobs. We also offer a 401K plan. You know, we've been told by some of our employees who have worked at the other place that when the new company came in, they took away the 401K plan. If you're so short of employees, why would you be taking benefits away? Doesn't make any sense. Raul matches his 401K plan for his employees. So we just ask that you seriously consider our application and that we ask that you provide us with the opportunity to come in and provide a great service and be competitive. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Questions from the?
Walter, I didn't get your last name.
Eiseman, E-I-S-M-A-N-N.
Thank you, sorry about that. How many, how many ambulances were approved by Public Safety?
Four. Well, to be, at the Public Safety meeting, there was not a number discussed. We said that we were going to start with four.
Any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Was there discussion of moving that number to two?
There was discussion after the meeting.
Okay.
I think Mike DeSouza, our operations manager, could speak to that, that he was pulled off to the side after the meeting had adjourned.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is there any other questions from the dies? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to get up and speak? Please identify yourself at the microphone, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Miklowski and I am the Regional Florida Manager of Critical Care Transportation and Transfers for the Cleveland Clinic. The presentation that preceded this hearing was right on point. We are seeing phenomenal growth, eighteen percent to be exact, from this presentation. We need more services. Currently this morning, we can already tell that Tuesday's going to be a very busy day this week. We called Amanda at All County to ask about ETAs. They're unable to provide a single ambulance to any Cleveland Clinic patient today. That is unacceptable. As a resident here in St. Lucy County, my entire family lives in District Five and deserve to have options that meet their standards of world-class care. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Ahmad Khan?
Good morning Board Members and Chair Members. My name is Robert Ahmad Khan. I'm a United States Navy veteran and I am very thankful and grateful that I found All County and that they gave me the opportunity to work for them. They've provided me with almost every opportunity, everything that I've asked for, to the point to where my children that are following in my footsteps, I've brought them into the business. I am also grateful and thankful that they've provided me these educational opportunities and job opportunity, selecting me as an FTO for me to provide education to our younger paramedics that are coming up, EMTs are coming up, that are currently working for surrounding counties, surrounding hospitals as firefighters and EMTs. All County has done nothing but helped me out in every possible way since I've been with them. During the pan epidemic, things got hard, things got tough. I wound up contracting COVID for helping my community and my company. They were there to support me, take care of me, take care of my children, take care of my family with whatever needs that I needed at the time. All County has been, I've been with them for nineteen years. And like I said, I'm a critical care paramedic, field training officer. I, if I did not like the company this much, I would not be here with the company. I am grateful for standing in front of you guys to speak on behalf of my company and to provide, and the opportunities that they've given me and to provide some insight to you. May y'all have a safe holiday and happy holidays.
Thank you, any questions?
Not a question, but I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you ma'am, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sarah Niesius?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are y'all doing? Chairman, County Commissioners, my name is Sarah Niesius. I work for NHT. I am proud to be an employee at NHT. I have contracted COVID as well. And NHT had provided me with sick pay, helped me out when I needed it as well. Like, I had worked for the previous, like they said, they took away the 401K. So I went to NHT with the same pay. They give you a training, which is helpful, and they're a great company to work for. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Charles Mayman?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Charles Mayman for All County Ambulance. As you know before you today, you have a request for a certificate of public convenience and necessity, a COPCN from National Health Transport. I'm respectfully asking that you vote against the COPCN today. And I appreciate the opportunity to be given the time and address the reasons why. All County Ambulance has been serving St. Lucy County and the Treasure Coast since the year two thousand. All County's sister companies, American Ambulance began serving the Treasure Coast in two thousand and seven. And in two thousand and nineteen, United Medical Transportation began providing service. The three companies work together to prove and provide outstanding service to St. Lucy County residents and visitors alike. I'd like to take a moment and introduce our management team who's with us here today. They're sitting across the front row here. And behind me are our EMTs and paramedics who have worked tirelessly, tirelessly through the pandemic to provide service for St. Lucy County residents. There are a few points I'd like to make regarding the COPCN request from NHT. As we're all aware, the pandemic has caused severe staffing shortages in every industry and private sector emergency medical services has certainly been impacted. One week ago today, the Broward County Commission heard a similar COPCN request and turned the applicant down based on lack of availability of certified EMTs and paramedics. County staff, in fact, and Broward County staff made the recommendation to deny the application on that very basis. Most interestingly, who spoke before the commission during that meeting in opposition to another company's application for a COPCN, the very applicant you had before you today, NHT. If you'd allow me, I'd like you to play, I'd like to play you a video clip of that presentation of the representative of NHT before the Broward County Commission exactly one week ago today. Can you help us with that?
Do you have it tuned up to play?
On behalf of National Health Transport, we are here today to respectfully ask that you vote against item number seventy. As some of your staff backup shows, National Health Transport is one of your small providers, a family-owned company here in South Florida. And we have been struggling through the last couple of years with lots of turnover, employment shortages, you name it, you've read about it, but the ambulance industry has been absolutely whacked with some of these labor issues. And if you look at Dr. McDougal's memo, it is clear that this agenda item will only contribute to that major labor issue. It's only going to tap an already short supply of eligible drivers. This is not a units-on-the-road issue, this is an employment issue, this is a number of eligible drivers interested in the jobs. That's the kind of issue we're dealing with. If you look at the very last couple sentences of Dr. McDougal's memo, she'll say coastal care, the applicant, blah, 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 has indicated that they would not, that they would need to tap into the existing talent in the county to staff their vehicles. That right there, they've admitted, the applicant has admitted that we're going to have to go and cannibalize a current industry that is serving the county pretty well. If you look at some of the other materials prepared by Dr. McDougal and her office, eighty-five percent of facilities in Broward saying that their ambulance needs are being met. That is not a system that is broken, that is not a system that needs to look inward and cannibalize its own. You have a quality level of service. You know, another thing that is kind of important to point out in the COPCN is, the COPCN application, it's not limited, transferred to one particular facility or one particular area, it's not limited to, it's just our employees and just our patients to just one of our facilities. These are countywide licenses that would allow transport among any facility in Broward. And I think that is kind of an important thing. Again, these providers that are, we have a stable system. Your staff surveys show that it is a stable system. Eighty-five percent of your facilities saying their needs are being met. This is not the time to go adding more COPCNs into the process and continue to tap an already strained industry that has had a lot of struggles, like a lot of other industries have had over the last couple of years. So please, we respectfully ask that you vote no on item seventy. And thank you for, thank you for your help.
Thank you. Here is Isabel Rodriguez, followed by Jennifer Miklowski.
You can stop, yes, thank you.
Not everybody has to take their entire three minutes, but you're more than welcome to.
I couldn't have made the case better myself as to why you should deny NHT's application today. They stood in front of the Broward County Commission using, telling you exactly what I'm telling you today. The staffing situation is the same in Broward County as it is in St. Lucy County, as it is in every county in the state of Florida currently. The applicant knows this. And seeking a COPCN here at this time is both opportunistic and disingenuous. As you are aware, during the pandemic, St. Lucy County had a problem with trash removal. The contractor had a good track record with the county prior to the pandemic. The issue was driven purely by a personnel shortage. I point this out as to somewhat parallel the situation that private sector emergency medical services finds ourselves in. If the bodies aren't there and in our case, trained and state-certified EMTs and paramedics, then no one else can claim they can come in and do a better job. The applicant this morning is talking about eighty-six personnel available. I, I, I'm amazed. I'd like to see where the eighty-six personnel are coming from. We have shared information with you concerning the shortage of personnel on a local and statewide and national basis. We've also shared how we participate in the county. Over the last three years, All County Ambulance has provided over two million dollars in uncompensated care for St. Lucy County residents. We have served the need and necessity of St. Lucy County's private ambulance services for the last two decades. And historically, pre-pandemic, there have been no service complaints to the Public Safety Director's Office concerning our services. We have worked hard to develop working relationships with the healthcare entities that we serve. And whatever struggles we have faced have been no different from any other provider in the medical field in dealing with the unprecedented world, world, world crisis. We are finally beginning to emerge from the staffing problems and find our new normal. Frankly, the timing makes no sense at all for another provider to enter St. Lucy County at this time. When the economy and staffing shortages have righted themselves, it may be reasonable to look at this issue. But today, the only reasonable response is to deny the application. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sir, we have a question from the die.
Before you run off, as part of the conversation, you've heard some suggestions that the capacity, the serving capacity has been not there. Is there any indication that your company was going to increase capacity and ability to be more applicable to services that are needed? Because what I'm thinking is that from a standpoint of adding one or two ambulances from, from your operation might give you that ability to take care of any other challenges that I'm hearing from the audience.
Commissioner, thank you for the question, it's a great question. The answer is yes. Commissioner, just so you're aware and the commission is aware, on a daily basis, All County Ambulance, the three companies together are putting out about twenty to twenty-one vehicles a day. And we are going to increase that because we have had some applicants of very recent, okay, to about twenty-two to twenty-three a day. to about 22 to 23 a day. We're working hard. And so I think that it's there, but it's a very slow go. It is. We tried to provide the commission, as you know, with some information prior to the meeting, just as I'm sure, you know, well, about where our employees have gone to, what's caused the shortage in our world. And again, Commissioner, to answer your question specifically, the answer is, is that we are getting there. We add our, we are adding the additional staffing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Any other, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak? Please identify yourself, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff. Adam Fetterman, I have the pleasure of representing All County today. And I'd like to play just a little bit of cleanup. You know, I've learned a lot about ambulance services in the last couple of weeks. And just like politics, they make strange bedfellows. Interestingly, you don't catch from the Broward County video that it was the Cleveland Clinic's own ambulance service seeking the COPCN in Broward that NHT was opposing. And here we have the Cleveland Clinic conveniently in support of NHT's application today. I also find interesting the degree to which, you know, as an attorney, you know, I go into court. I'm an officer of the court. I've sworn to say certain, sworn to an oath to tell the truth. And so are people when they testify, but they're not required to do so when they testify before this body. And I believe that some of the comments that have been made here without any evidence or proof to back them up are simply opportunistic and disingenuous. This comes down to an opportunity seen within our capitalist economy, which I think we all embrace and appreciate. But an opportunity seen for a competitor to come in when somebody's down through no circumstances of their own, but simply the circumstances of the world, and sees an opportunity to get their nose under the tent, so to speak. You know, I believe, as I think all of you understand, having had the opportunity to represent this community, I believe in the exceptionalism of St. Lucy County. But to suggest that the staffing arrangement or opportunities in St. Lucy County are so drastically different than every other county in the state of Florida and every other state in the nation, when every single sector of the economy, every single industry has witnessed severe staffing shortages and challenges, to suggest that there are people lined up waiting to work for someone other than All County Ambulance, when All County Ambulance is having a hard time filling those positions themselves, as is virtually every other employer. I'm sure you've heard from your constituents. Again, it is simply opportunistic and disingenuous. I also am troubled by the comment that is conveniently made that because there's some type of monopoly, that there are folks afraid to come up and speak before you. That's not the community we live in. I, I know the folks at the, at the local hospitals. I had the pleasure of serving on the Board of Trustees for St. Lucy Medical Center for 10 years. These are not shrinking violets who are afraid to stand up and, and speak out should there be an issue. Again, convenient commentary from the applicant today. All County has served this community for over two decades effectively. It has served it well, as Charlie shared, over $2 million in uncompensated care in just the last three years alone, plus supporting this community, supporting folks with good-paying jobs in our community who live here, raise their children here, kids go to school here. Is this an opportunity to revisit maybe in a couple of years when things right themselves? Absolutely. Today, denying this application is the only right choice. And I thank you for your time today and for your service.
Thank you. Is there already anyone else or any questions for Mr. Fetterman? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Please come up and identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commission. Thank you very much for the ability to speak in front of all of you. Roy Rodriguez, National Health Transport, CEO and founder. I first of all want to say thank you. Thank you to All County. All County and National Health Transport have been working together through various counties with never having an issue. And I want to thank Charlie for sharing that video. Because it's because of competition that back in 2016, when All County and National Health Transport broke into a monopoly in Broward County for over 20-plus years because service was not being rendered adequately. And since 2016, since we got in, now they're at an 85% satisfaction rate, which was never there before. So that's showing you what happens when you have market competition. It shows you the need that more, more companies, more providers, a bigger opportunity to service the community. In regards to what the other gentleman spoke prior, if there is a need for us to show you the applications that we've received, which is over 50 applications, close to 80 applications, I have no problem whatsoever showing the 80 applications at any request. And if you decide to go to Indeed.com and you search up EMT within a 25-mile radius, it'll show you exactly how many applicants are out there or how many people are willing to work. And not just EMTs, paramedics as well. So the fact that someone's coming up here and saying that I'm taking advantage of this situation, I'm not. And more importantly, when you read those comment cards out loud, and he's mentioning the facilities, please listen to every single comment card that's here. Listen to the, to the facilities. Listen to the brokers requesting additional providers. When they say, oh, this isn't the right time. When is the right time? Who, who's more important at the end of the day? The patient. So if your facilities here in the county are requesting additional providers to service the patients, your constituents, why wouldn't you give it to them? Let the market, let the companies, by the way, again, we have worked together for over 10 years without a problem. Mind you, when All County and National Health, when it's a Palm Beach, trying to break into another monopoly, which we were denied, the same issue arose. Still with a monopoly there. And I guarantee you, in X amount of years, All County and National Health will work together to try to get into Palm Beach as well. In this county, you are seeing that there is a need. Again, I implore you, please listen to the comment cards. Listen to Cleveland Clinic that just told you that they can't get an ETA today to transport their patients. She just said it. And when you listen to the comment cards, it'll concur to what she's saying. At the end of the day, I just ask and request that you listen to your facilities and think about the patients. Thank you. Have a great day.
Any questions? None, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the audience? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, Madam Secquid Clerk, is there some?
They're all done.
They've all been?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I'll open it up to the board.
I'll go. My notes are kind of all over the place, so it may not be in order. First of all, I heard that there is a perception of an overall lack of labor. I don't think that that is a perception. I've done some research. We have a problem with the ambulance services nationally, not just here, not just in the state of Florida. We all know that COVID hurt everyone, but we're not back yet. And I believe in competition. I've always felt that that was extremely important. However, I also believe that there's a time for that. And bringing in competition at this point, I just can't support. That 86 applicants are in a 25-mile radius. 20 from four.
No, I'm sorry. The applicants are actually.
You have to be on the microphone.
Sir, would you like, if you're going to answer the question, we're not going to do it from a chair. We're going to do it up at the dice. Just wait one moment, please, Madam Commissioner.
I'm sorry. Once again, Walt Dyson with National Health Transport. We posted jobs on Indeed in the Treasure Coast, okay? And we received 86 applications from EMTs and paramedics. We have these, these are actual applications. This isn't us going out and looking for things on the internet to substantiate our case. These are physical applications that people have applied at NHT. And we'll be happy to provide all of them to you.
Well, I've heard different numbers from both of you.
There was.
So I am not going to get into a debate at this point. I think that this is the point for us to speak. Everybody has had your opportunity at public to be heard. Now is the time for us.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anything else, ma'am?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not done.
That's fine.
I heard that in Palm Beach County, you have joined together to try to get into Palm Beach County and break up a monopoly. And that didn't go as well as you anticipated. My guess is, it wasn't the time. My concern is, this isn't the right timing. I think that there are comments made that disturb me. One, the comment about hospice and saying things like, oh, well, a delay could cause death. I get that. I worked for hospice. However, I think that for me, that comes across as a scare tactic. And it's not reality. We have people that are working here that are doing their job. I believe that we've done a great job. I will tell you that I've heard from staff that we don't have the data in yet. And that it will take some time to get data that will truly show whether there is the need at this point. I prefer to wait for the data. I prefer to see how we come back and how this company comes back from what they're doing. So once again, I believe in competition. I'm not saying that this shouldn't happen. What I'm saying is, it's not the right timing. And I won't be supporting this.
Anyone else from the dice?
Mr. Chair, first of all, I want to give props to the public safety staff. A lot of work has gone into this process of cleaning up an antiquated system. And, and Ms. Kozak, you've done a lot of work on this, especially in the, the surveys, getting the surveys out and so on and so forth. And from the standpoint, again, back to a new system of data collection, getting that information in. I also read in the backup where it talked about it took a while to get some of the agencies, the hospitals and so on and so forth, to actually get information to you. So my thought process is if, if there was such a clamoring of need, that would have been the first thing, they'd have been all over the opportunity to have a say-so. I also suspect that because of the professional staffs at each of the hospitals in St. Lucy County, they would have immediately gone to public safety and emergency operations center and said, we have a serious issue. And they would have made that request long before any surveys or anything like that would have been sent out. So that's, that's first and foremost. It is a new system. You're just growing it. You've only done two surveys so far. One was done at the, at the onset of COVID. If I recall, it was in a March data collection standpoint. Is that right?
Yes, we did. This is Karen Kozak, Public Safety Department. So yes, you are correct. We implemented the initial survey early this year. We did put it out in February. It took about two months to get all the surveys back. And we are currently preparing for our next survey. That'll be put out at the beginning of next, next year as well.
Okay, so that just, again, really drives home the point that while we as a county are making moves to make our systems better, I think that's, that's credible. That's something we have to do. And I think you're doing a great job doing it in, in that of the public safety side. The other is, I, I had these comments, these questions of both entities when they came to talk to me, or I actually zoomed on one of them. And, and I asked the question because we are having a challenge with, with employment issues. You know, we're, we're losing a number of our brightest and best to the private sector here in the county. But the essential workers, you know, and, and there was a time when, when, you know, people thought, you know, being, somebody raised the idea about the trash collecting. You know, oh, you're, you're, you're a engineer, a trash engineer. What was that? How's that go?
Sanitation.
Sanitation engineer. But, but today, you can't get somebody to, to drive a CDL truck and, and, and collect trash or have somebody on the back of a truck to collect trash. And, and so we're changing the definition of what essential workers are. I, I'm on the fireboard, and I know that there are a number of our paramedics that are also acting now as, as nurses because of the shortage there as well. And so, so all of those things are true. The fact is, I, I asked the question of the current provider, if there was additional need and need for capacity. I heard that they, they were indicating a willingness and opportunity to expand. So from that standpoint, I'm appreciated that that was an answer. But more importantly, I was so disturbed when I saw this video. I'm sitting here watching it and just in awe. And, and, you know, somebody used the term shock and awe. Well, that was today for me, watching that video. And it was so adamant, the speaker, to saying how, how difficult it was. And so, you know, Broward's not that far away. We, there was a time in St. Lucy County where 60,000 people were driving from St. Lucy County to Palm Beach and, and Martin County to take jobs. Well, I can tell you that if the job was so, so well-paying and so on and so forth, they would travel across county lines. So, so I don't know that, you know, we're different than Broward. So I'm hesitant. I, I absolutely agree with the competition, but it's a timing thing for me. I think you re-raised the term timing. Is it, is it right time today? I don't think so. In a year, after the, the data collection becomes more appropriate and, and here's an opportunity for the public and anybody that's saying that they are in need of services to get a hold of public safety and be on, on point for that first and immediate survey. So if that's the case, if those folks are out there, then they should be on the survey. It has to be credible survey and not just somebody that, you know, you see the, the, the things on Facebook or one of those social media places where everyone chimes in. Well, are they all credible? So I want to make sure that whenever that data collection is done, it is by a credible source. So that said, I'm, I'm, today, I'm not in favor of moving this forward. So I'll be voting against this application today.
Thank you. Are there any other Commissioners that would like to speak?
Go ahead.
So for me, I first want to go to the sheet that we were given today, where it talks about Section 18-56 in the standards of review. And if you look at those four standards, this is something that I have to look at. So first of all, I want to say thank you to All County and National because this, this is a need and it's about, it's about the public and the healthcare. And that, you know, that's an important thing. And I think that you both have served, and I think you both have served in the other counties you're serving. And my hope is, at the end of the day, you're going to find a way to be able to get together. And I do want it on the record to state that Charlie at All County actually commended your company. I didn't know a whole lot about your company at the time. And he actually said very nice things about the company, as you did about them in my private conversations with both of you. So I think that that's good. We all talk about home role, right? And so I, I think about that, and I've thought about that the last couple of days. And then yesterday, when it came up about this video. And as it's been stated several times today, St. Lucy County is different. And our needs are different here. And our fire department is different here. We have a unique situation with our paramedics and EMTs in St. Lucy County that no other county has in the state. And so I did go into Indeed, and I, and I have looked at applications. There was 200 and something applications ready to go to work within a 30-mile radius.
Even more so. And yes, there is a shortage of employees. We know that. We've seen that with the garbage. Garbage is entirely different than healthcare. Back in the early nineties, when I worked at Lawnwood, All County was in. And I know that, you know, they were, they had their struggles back then, as every business always has struggles. So, I look at this as it's a life and safety issue, and it's important. And even though there, there are, basically, I believe, Karen, isn't there four companies? There's the three that Charlie owns, and then there's one other smaller one. But at the end of the day, there's really only one person here that really has the, the contracts. And so, without competition, hospitals and the patients, they really only have one choice. Because Charlie owns three of the companies that have the certificates here. And for me, I, I think diversity is healthy. I think diversity is good. I think that there should be patient choice. I think hospitals should, should have choice. I think that, you know, if I had a mother at Lawnwood and All County couldn't get there, I would want the opportunity to pick up and have the hospital call, call another provider to be able to get them there. And so, for me, I look at this from a different perspective, from the business side of it, that I know that we have paramedics and EMTs here ready and willing to go to work. And I am about diversity, and I'm about not having all your eggs in one basket. And so, you know, I support, staff has said that they have determined that there's a need. Staff is in favor of this. They have said there's a need. And I, I, I was a little bit taken back by the video of what happened, but I'm not going to look at that. That's not St. Lucie County. What we have in St. Lucie County is different. And what they were doing in other counties is not the same as what's being done here. So, for me, I would be in support of, of being able to have opportunity and being able to let the hospitals to be able to have choice and have something else to be offered to the patients, the families. Because at the end of the day, life, safety issues are really, really important to me, and I believe in diversity.
Ms. Hutchinson?
My questions are going to be geared more towards staff. We, when we talked yesterday, I had asked the question of how many complaints on our survey kind of thing had come in. What was that number?
Customer service feedback, which is where we can take in accolades, recommendations for improvement, and also complaints. For Class B, we have only had one that was submitted. It was by Lawnwood Regional Medical, Medical Center. One department had submitted that complaint. We did follow up with them afterwards to determine what the issue was. It was validated by what the statement was in the complaint. And then we did speak with them about a week ago. And they said that since that, since the complaint had been filed, there had not been any other issues.
Okay, and, and how long has that been going on? And I do know that there was a long time in getting responses from the users, the end-users, if you will. So, but that service has been available for how many, how long?
The customer service feedback form? That also went into effect earlier this year as well. So, historically, what we've had to do in regards to determining needs within the county, determining issues, complaints of any sort within the county, up until this year, honestly, it's really been by word of mouth. Phone calls, emails, passing in the hallways, passing after a meeting or before a meeting. We've always had to determine needs, complaints, gaps, simply by word of mouth. Implementing this system earlier this year has provided an opportunity to solicit objective comments coming directly from that person without it being misconstrued. It was implemented right around March or April of this year as well. We rolled it out around the same time as our surveys right afterwards. So, with this process that we have in place, we're able to, first off, have a customer service feedback that is available to all the citizens that utilize the system, all healthcare facilities, and also for our transportation providers as well. So, it's objective and it's across the board. So, any healthcare facility can log on to this portal and state, ABC Transportation, arrived promptly today, great service, thank you. Also, on the other side of it, we can have it to where the transportation provider can log in and say, ABC Hospital, arrived today, patient was ready to go, no issues, thank you. So, it is a platform that allows both sides to provide comments. There is a contact that has to be put in there, so nobody can file anything anonymously. And at that point, we are notified when a submission is made. We follow up with them, and we do determine what that resolution is, and we follow through on that. So, that was implemented earlier this year.
Okay. Thank you. And now, I'm going to go back to one of the questions I had asked the staff to look into, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to yet. But have we checked the number of applicants with, and I'm going to use just IRSC because they're the closest four-county institution, if you, I think there's a private one out there also. But have you, were you able to look at the numbers last year, pre-pandemic and current, of what their applications for training and so forth are?
I do not have historical data at this time. That is something I am working on. Speaking to both of the agencies, I have spoken to both educational groups. Both of them were very interested in participating and sharing the data with me. They both have expressed a strong interest in working with any transportation organization that does come into the facility, into the county, in working with staffing needs. For Indian River State College, the comment that I received was, we average about fifteen paramedic and a hundred and twenty EMT program graduates. TCMI.
Is that a current number, or is that just what their average over time is?
Their average, is what he stated for me. With TCMI, twenty twenty-one, seventy-five EMT graduates. And for paramedic, they had thirty-eight. And that is just for this year alone. So, I am working with both of them to continue to gather that historical data.
All right, thank you. And then, I'm going to go back to comments that were made by separate board members. And Commissioner Zdowski, you kind of hit on it as, in regards to timing and the fact of what our staff is looking to accommodate in the future. You always want to be improving and so forth. And I think this thing goes this, but what concerns me is, is the employment issue is one thing. Where is, where is the employment pool? Is it people coming out of, fresh out of school? Is it existing firefighter, paramedics who are looking to, for second job? Is it retired? That many of them retire in their fifties, but yet still want to continue giving back to community service, so they'll do it in that way. So, that part, I don't know yet. Nobody's even talked about it. As far as applicants saying, or someone saying, one side or the other saying, well, I've got applicants and I've got shortages. I can't go there. Because that's not my, that is not my obligation. It's yours to do your job. That is your responsibility, not mine. But I do agree that there is a drop in the number. And I think for two of you that sit on the fireboard and those that of us that have had history or are familiar with, we know that, we've seen that here in St. Lucie County. Going back to the one complaint, I could only wish, as a business, and since March of this year, I would have one complaint against me. Now, if they're out there and they didn't report them, shame on them. The knowledge was out there, it was available, and nobody took advantage of that. So, to come in here now at the last minute and say, oh, we have these hundreds of times, there is a process that we all need to follow, just like they do within their businesses. There's a process that should be followed. So, and it was recent. As I recall, the complaint was only in the last five to six weeks.
Yes, it's very, fairly recent.
So, I mean, that's a pretty good record for me, as far as complaints of need. And that is one of the things I keep going back to. Commissioner Townsend, you held up our little paper on the state statutes of the four requirements on the standards of review. And that is one of them, is, is there a need? And I'm not seeing the need short of what was said earlier, the earlier days of whispered, that kind of stuff. But since there has been a process in place for more than half the year plus, one complaint's not bad. One need is not bad. So, I'm willing to do what you suggested, Commissioner Barts, is to let the data come in. It's not like we can't open up if the need is there sooner, rather than that, what, September, I think we talked about, is usually when the next go-around would come through.
Yes, with the ordinance revisions, we would do our needs analysis at the beginning of the year. Based upon the needs analysis, we would make a recommendation to the EMS Advisory Council and then to you to determine if we would want to open it up to receive COPC and applications. And that would be in the month of September.
And that, and if there is a true need, if people start, the vendors, the users and the citizens, if they start using that data stuff that's available, if there shows a need sooner, then it's not like we can't bring it before us sooner during the normal timeframe. So, at this time, I'm not seeing a reason of a need as stated today.
Thank you.
Ms. Hutchinson?
So, I appreciate all the work you've done, because I knew you've put a ton of time and work into this. Question for you, because I keep hearing it over and over again, is that we're going to look at this at the beginning of the year. So, today is December fourteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
We have thirty-one days in December. Is this going to be back before us again in January? Or are we going to be looking at this later as the data comes in and if the need is shown? I just can't see going through this in less than a month again.
No, so what's going to happen is, we're going to take the current needs, this current needs survey. We're going to go through it, fine-tune it, and identify if there's any additions or deletions that needs to be made to the survey. Once we have the survey completed and updated, we will then send it out to all of our external and internal stakeholders and get feedback from them on identifying what those needs are. And then from there, that is where we are going to evaluate those needs. And along with evaluating those needs based on the survey, we're going to continue to monitor any feedback that we get through the customer service feedback platform as well. But also, on top of that, we also get in a monthly run reporting from each agency that has a COPC in within St. Lucie County. With this monthly run reporting, it reports to us the number of calls that they respond to within that month. And it's the number of trucks that are available on the road during that month and average. But on top of that, it is breaking down of those calls as well. Is it ALS calls? Is it BLS calls? So, we're able to look at trending as well. And that's something that we take into account with our recommendation and then also with our needs analysis. So, when we come back before you again, it is compiling all of this data together. It is our call volume, number of trucks on the road, any service, customer service feedback. And also, on top of that, you know, have we had any complaints, recommendations?
I would only have, I think, one more question because Commissioner Zdowski brought it up. If we are going to send out a survey, are we going to put a date certain on it to be returned?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, that's only because we know that we've had issues in the past. So, I really think that letting it sit out there for two months, three months, four months skews the data and doesn't give us what we need. I'd rather that you report that this is the data we have. These people did not respond. I'm going to take that, no response, as no concerns. But
May first. That is the application deadline. And it is, I'm sorry, that is our deadline to conduct the survey. And it is noted in the ordinance as well as being May first.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm last.
You're last.
First, I thank both companies for presenting today. I can just tell you from a personal standpoint, I have a ninety-five-year-old mother that twice in the last year, my mom needed ambulatory care to our house. Now, one time, she was fifty minutes late, my mom was, and I was very concerned. What happened was the, was it the ambulatory service? And it was not, it was the hospital. The hospital had not, I think, fed my mother yet and changed her so she could come home. But I had no complaints with the ambulatory care. Don't know what company it was, one of the three, I guess. But there was three of them. They brought my mom in. She was on a stretcher where she didn't have to sit in a wheelchair in the ambulance thing. So, I was pleased with that. I believe in competition too. But after reviewing that video that I saw the other day, I was, I was taken back. I'm going to be perfectly frank with you. I was just like, wow. That's a hundred and eighty-degree turn. And when the word cannibalism was used, you know, I come from, my background was where we, we interviewed apprentices and thing too. So, you can have three hundred applications. We've had a hundred applications and only twelve were qualified to do the job. Either they couldn't pass a drug test, they didn't have a high school diploma, or GED. So, those numbers, I don't weigh as heavy as somebody maybe John Q. Public would, only because of my previous experience. And I do believe that it's driven, data-driven. And I asked yesterday, prior to the pandemic, were there any complaints about the ambulatory care that we presently have? And I don't believe I could get an answer, because you're doing that data now. Is that correct, Ms. Kozak?
Yes, so when we discuss complaints previously, we're looking at phone calls, verbal conversations, those type of elements to where you really cannot validate it because there's no objective way to collect that complaint, to collect that data. So, when we look at where we are today with looking at complaints, we do have an objective platform to where Mr. Smith had a complaint. He submits it in, and it remains objective. It's not, well, I think they said, or anything like that. So, it is a completely objective, historical capture of a complaint. So, historically, it's always been, like I said, phone calls, passing in the hallways, those type of elements. And again, things get misconstrued or taken out of context. And if somebody wants to follow up on that conversation a month or two down the road, we may not know who to reach back out to again. There has not ever been a complaint on treatment. There has never been, to my knowledge, no complaints on treatment, no complaints on professionalism. The only issue that we've had to repeatedly have a conversation on has been timeliness.
All right, and I'm just going to finish by saying, I agree with the board up here that once we get the data back, you know, I think our decisions are made on facts and not fiction. So, I will not be supporting the, that today. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this?
You already closed the public hearing.
Oh, I did, okay, good. Sometimes I forget, so I did it twice. Then I guess we will entertain a, a motion on the subject, madam.
Move denial.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barts. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. Okay.
We know how to clear a room.
Boy, that's right. We know how to clear a room is right. Okay, we're going to go on to the regular agenda, and I'll turn it over to our county attorney, Dan McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item will actually be presented by Deputy County Administrator Alfonso Jefferson. Just a brief background in terms of teeing it up for him. The county, as the board is aware, did file suit against various companies and is part of the national opioid litigation. The state of Florida is also involved in that. We are part of a consortium of local governments and state governments that's trying to work out settlement negotiations, and we have done that. The board's approved numerous items. We're at a different phase of this. It involves an interlo- It involves an inter-local agreement and a opioid funding advisory committee. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Again, Alfonso Jefferson, Deputy County Administrator. You know, Dan went over the history, I just wanted to point out that on June 1st, 2021, the board approved resolution number 21-085, approving the Florida MOU. And that MOU really set out the groundwork as far as how the regional settlement funds within Florida, the requirements to receive and manage the regional funds, and the purpose for which the regional funds may be used. One of the major components of that particular MOU is, is order for St. Lucie County to become a qualified county eligible to receive the regional funding, there must be an inter-local agreement among St. Lucie County municipalities as defined in the MOU, with combined population exceeding 50% of the total population of the municipalities within St. Lucie County. So, overall, what we've done is we've reached out to both the municipalities, although we only needed the city appoint St. Lucie to enter into an inter-local agreement. Both cities have responded back that they have approved the inter-local agreement. And so, staff is recommending the approval of the inter-local agreement along with the resolution to create the opioid funding advisory committee. In January, we will be coming back to the board for the advisory committee for the ratification of appointments from the county administrator. So, there's two appointments by the county administrator that needs to be ratified by the board of county commissioners. All other entities that were included on, have said they will be appointing people to that, the funding advisory committee. I'm specifically waiting for the cities to give me their appointments, that was, those are the major ones, before we can call a funding advisory committee meeting, if the board approves for us to have the funding advisory committee. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Jefferson?
Make a couple comments.
Sure.
You know, I have to be honest. I have been leading this charge for probably close to 15 years. And even though I advocated for us and the city to enter into the lawsuit, I must say that I had my doubts all along. So, I truly appreciate the fact that we went after Big Pharma so strongly. This has been an issue that has affected, I would be... I think I'm truthful when I believe that everybody has been affected. It may not be them, their immediate family, but the opioid crisis has affected so many families and so many deaths. So, I get it. I'm glad to see that the cities have determined that they are going to join us. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion to put together the MOU and go forward with it. Thank you, Alfonso, for what you're doing.
We do have a motion, but before I entertain that motion, is there any other comments or questions for Alfonso from the dais? Seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Barts. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Zdowski. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski. Chair Mitchell.
That was last year. Yes, ma'am.
Now, part of the WHO dynasty, but you are WHO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, as you indicated, is item 10A2. It is a proposed resolution that, if adopted, would amend the county's investment policy. The county is, has created an investment committee. There is a state law that governs really what kind of investments the county can make. It's in response to some, some issues that happened many years ago, and so we have a committee that really looks at the investments, they make recommendations, and in fact, they've done that in November of this year. They've made certain recommended changes, they're outlined in black line form in a, the policy that's attached. The county's finance director and clerk are really responsible for that. They have asked that we review and approve those. They are in the audience. If the board has any specific questions, staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Townsend. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. On to number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is 10A3. It relates to the county's Midway Road Improvement Project. This project, if approved, would install 1.5 miles of guard rail on the north side of Midway Road from Shin Road to McCarty Road. It would install a safety edge on both sides of the road, new line striping, reflective pavement markings, and asphalt weed barrier control. One of the unique things about this project, however, is that it would, it would not meet the Green Book standards, the DOT standards. However, these proposed improvements will make the roads safer than it currently exists today. So, if we, we stuck with the idea that it doesn't meet Green Book standards, and we're not going to do it, then you have a road that's, that's unsafe, and now we have the opportunity to make it safer. I would look, as an example, on Brock Smith Road, we did the same thing. It provides the county's Public Works Department the ability to go ahead with a project, even though it doesn't actually meet the, the minimum standards. The board is making a policy or planning decision, which I believe is immune from, from litigation. That's why we're proposing to do this by resolution, so that we've made a reasoned judgment. We've considered all the facts, and we've decided that it's more important to make the roads safer. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions from the dais?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski, second by Commissioner Barts. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, while we're on the subject of Midway Road, I just want to bring it up for the board, because we, we're moving into the process by which we're going to make improvements on Midway more to the east. And it, Commissioner Hutchinson, you, you struck a nerve with me with the Wawa, in a good way, so. And, and the reason being is that we talked about the landscaping along Midway Road, and we had talked earlier on about the entry, which is a central portion of the county, and making it a welcoming place in which to come with much more beautification process. So, I just wanted to bring it up to the board to see if there'd be any support to have a landscape architect to actually design that which would be that corridor from the west to the east. And the reason why I think that through is because with the Wawa, the idea of having mature trees at that intersection, if they were, say, I don't know, royal palms, I'm not a landscape architect, but if you created...
Oaks.
Pardon?
Oaks.
Oaks, whatever.
Because they're already lining the road.
Yeah, whatever the case.
They're already, they're lining the road.
But just creating that, that vision that, that is, you know, much more inviting to the community. So, I, I just wanted to throw that out there, because, you know, you go into some communities, like, for instance, South Beach, Fort Pierce, you know, the, the whole South Beach Road is all lined with, with royal palms. And it's very nice looking, and, and they're self-sloughing, they, they basically manicure themselves. And the challenge I thought about with the oaks was, you know, because if they're going to be close to a sidewalk, are they going to lift the sidewalks? That's the only thought process I had with the, with the oaks. But I just wanted to bring it up to see if there's any support for us to even contemplate the idea of staff having a landscape architect bring us some ideas as to what that corridor could look like, because I really am buying into your idea that that central entrance into the county has to be something of, of, you know, grandeur, so to speak.
I don't have a problem with it, so long as it doesn't delay it. We've already asked the staff in this past budget, we put monies aside to start doing something, you know, from that 95, because I know they're, and they're looking into, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Tipton, you and I've had several conversations about it. I'm just concerned with, I don't need a landscape architect, because already half the road from US 1 is already landscaped. It would be nice to start matching it, you know, so that it doesn't have a big deviation, a variety of stuff going down, whereas sections it off if it's not something consistent all the way through. That's why we refer back to the oaks.
Well, that's why, that's why I brought it up too, and I'm glad you, you took me down that road, so to speak, is that, is that the development is going to come along that, that road. So, if we have a plan in place, and then the developers that are coming through, they understand what our, our vision is, they can just buy in, instead of us trying to make that decision, you know, with a public meeting with a...
By each one.
Yeah, because then you get different landscaping across the board. And if we have that vision, they know what to expect, and we know what the circumference of the trees are, et cetera, et cetera.
Do we have that ability, Mr. McIntyre, legally, to say this? Or do we have to do like an overlay over that? I know, I understand what you're saying, and I would agree. I just don't want to...
Delay.
Yeah, delay it and/or, because, I mean, it's going to be sectioned off, doing it by sections anyway, because you can't do from Selvus to Torino till we get the road and the over, the Turnpike Exchange and all that through there. But the section prior from Torino to 95 should go ahead and get done, which I think's what we budget for. You've, we've already got proposed developments coming in east, I'm sorry, west of 95 along the Midway Road corridor.
And it goes back to the lighting as well, you know, you know, matching the lighting. So, those are just thoughts I had since the last meeting. It was been on my mind, and I had reached out to Patrick and some of the others to, to see, you know, what staff thought about it, but I wanted to raise it to you today, because we did bring up Midway Road and just...
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, but go ahead.
Patrick, would you like to say a word?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Patrick Dian, Assistant Public Works Director. I just wanted to, to add something to the conversation. This was something that came up during the budget workshops this summer, and staff is currently awaiting a proposal from a landscape architectural firm for the section of Midway Road between I-95 and Glades Cut Off Road. That's one with, with a wide-open grass median, it's already four lanes, so we're not going to need to do any roadwork. This would be for a irrigation plan, a landscape plan, and also potentially some, some monument signage.
Monument signs.
Yes. So, to really create that, that gateway corridor entry feel, this is the same landscape architecture firm that was a subconsultant to the roadway designer for the previous two phases of Midway Road, so that consistency that we were talking about before will be continued along the corridor, so we don't have a difference in the look and the feel along there. That should be coming to us in the next week or two. So, once staff has that, we'll, we'll be bringing that before you as an agenda item for your support.
How's that sound, Mr. Zdowski?
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The board agrees.
Appreciate that. Okay. Next on is Planning and Development Services update from the Administrator and Director, Lesley Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, good morning. So, we had a big public hearing batch last week, but we also had some things that happened that we were working on in November. So, this is the update on that. It's not too much, though, it's pretty simple. Up in the Kings Highway Industrial Park, there is a reuse of an existing building. Chemtech does treatment of wood using an environmentally friendly process. And in the industrial light zoning district, that is not a listed permitted use, although it is similar to other uses that are permitted in the industrial light zoning district. So, we did, staff did an analysis, evaluated their exact proposal, and then made a use determination that this particular process would be considered permitted in the industrial light zoning district. And that is a target of the industry. Then we also had a minor adjustment to a major site plan for Turtle Reef condominium for some pool work and some deck work. And we also had the Reserve DRI request an extension under the executive order, and that was also processed in a timely manner. Those are the three items for the month of December, sorry, November. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sure that you reached out to PGA whenever they request for the extension, just so that they were aware that the extension was being...
Yes, yes, they were aware that this extension was being processed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm just going to wish you, somehow I found out that your birthday this Friday, so I just want to wish you a happy birthday, and thank you for all you've done for, for us in this county here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions of Ms. Olson? Seeing none? We'll go right on to announcements. Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a workshop or informal meeting at 1:00 today here in these chambers, and then our next regular meeting will be January 11th, Tuesday. And so, as this is our last regular meeting of the year, on behalf of your staff, I want to thank you for an amazing year. It really has been exhausting in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways, but, but in a good way, because so much has gotten done, and we've made progress on so many fronts. So, I thank you for your leadership and your vision on that, and I just wish our residents and you a happy holiday and a very safe holiday season.
I was going to close with that, Howard, but before I do a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank staff and everybody in this, in this county. We've had an amazing year, and with the challenges we had, we're, we're a shining star as a county in the state and around the nation, and I wish everyone and their families a safe and happy holiday season. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Merry Christmas.
Kid, I'll wait and do it at the informal, never mind.
Okay.
I would like to just make a suggestion, because I get a lot of, I've had calls about it, and Josh, I hate to put more work on you, but if you could get with Eric, and I know that you also had him on your Inside St. Lucie show to explain it, but if you could maybe do like a little Facebook post with Eric and put it on the St. Lucie County page, I think that that's the most watched thing with the county. And I know that when I was out there with Josh, there was people that actually approached us and stopped and asked questions, and he does a really good job. So, you could just do a little blurb on Facebook, and maybe Eric put it up there. I think a lot of the residents that are following that would enjoy that. So, I hate to put more on you, but you, you do a good job.
He did great on the Inside St. Lucie one.
He did, I saw it.
And I concur, because I now do coffee with the chair, and I had asked to have him on that show, and he had just done that one.
Yeah.
But I agree, when I went out there and spent the afternoon with you that day, he entertained six people.
Yeah, I know.
We're sitting there listening to every word he had to say, and it was invigorating.
And the residents are excited, and they watch, you know, they walk the jetty and they inquire, and I know that we all get calls. So, he, he did that, I don't know, social media, Facebook is where everybody follows everybody, so I think it would just really kind of wrap things up.
Well, it would also be nice if maybe we just could even put a sign down, down there.
Yeah, exactly, and let them know that this is a sand trap.
Well, if the city would allow us to do that.
Because they don't know what it is. They've stopped when I was there and said, what is this? What are you doing? So, that's true, Commissioner Hutchinson, if they had like a say, you know, just a sign stating this is our...
Well, we'd have to make sure the city of Fort Pierce is in control of that, but I mean, if they would let us put something up there, that would be great.
And again, thank you to you, Franny, because I know that you've really championed a lot of that stuff along with Josh, so I just want to say thanks.
You're a rock star, Josh.
The motion to adjourn.
All right, we'll call to, call to order the mosquito control district meeting of Tuesday, December 14th. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to the approval of the minutes from November 16th. We have a motion by Commissioner Barts, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a consent agenda of the warrants list.
Move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no regular items scheduled on the regula, regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. See everyone at one.
Thank you.